Good evening. Welcome. I'd like to follow the meeting to order the Kita Town Public Hospital District Number One, Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. A new day, we're all together. Except for a few and welcome those that are out in Zoom land. And then who do we have? So Jeff on Zoom, Jason, Amanda, Tom's here. Mandy's here and Ron. Welcome, everybody. So, yeah, it is different in a good way, right? We're here and we're doing it like the way it should be. So I'd like approval of the agenda. We have any changes? Have a motion by Matt. Second by Erica to approve the agenda. We have a consent agenda.
Move to approve consent.
A move by John.
I second that.
Seconded by Terry. I'm all in favor.
Aye.
Guess I didn't ask for all in favor for approval of the agenda. So approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Good, thank you. Yeah. Public comment. Do we have any public comments? All right, no public comment or announcements. So we'll start, really, we'll start with presentation by Tom on the audit. Tom, can we pass it on to you?
All right. Hello, everyone. My name's Tom Dingus. I'm from Dingus Circle and Associate, a CPA firm that performed the audit for the district. And got a few reports to cover, a couple of reports to cover this evening. I think most of you know me, but just a quick overview of who CZA is. We're a CPA firm, four partners, five partners total, about 40 people. We work exclusively with healthcare organizations and just a little bit of not-for-profit, mostly critical access hospitals and other rural hospitals. So really quick overview. I'm going to share screen and just get right into the report. So starting with the audited financial statements and I'm, you know, please ask questions anytime along the way. I can see the conference room a bit, but probably won't be able to see faces to know if you have a question without, I'm hearing it. So starting with the audited financial statements and then going a couple pages in is the first of the two auditors' reports, which where we give our opinion on the financial statement. It's an unmodified report, which means that the financial statements that follow present fairly the financial results and the financial position of the district. There is an emphasis of matter paragraph on the second page, which relates to, as everybody knows, the COVID-19 pandemic and just the uncertainties that it creates. It's not a negative disclosure. It just is to call the attention to the reader of an audited financial statement to a note disclosure later in the financial statements about the impact and the response to the pandemic. Then, starting on page three and for several pages is the management discussion and analysis. This is a condensed financial statement and then a narrative that goes with the financial statement. It's prepared by management. It's the place where it, you can tell the story of what happened during the year. And as we talked about in the finance committee, sometimes this is a rather boilerplate report, but a lot of effort was put into it on Scott and other team members and management to put this together where it does really a very complete story of the response to the COVID-19 pandemic and some of the other things that affected operations this year, some growth in some service lines, commitment to strategic plan and other things like that. So it is a really good document. If you're going to read one thing later, when you want to come back to what happened in 2020, this would be the place to go and read these four or five pages and you'd have a good summary of what happened. Moving on to the financial statements, like there are several pages there, is the page 10 is the asset part of the balance sheet or statements of net position. I'm not going to hit on too much here and really do the presentation, just hit on things that are significant or different. And there's a couple of things related to COVID-19 pandemic. First of all, on this page, you know, we'll come back to the financial indicators and talk about the cash position, but you'll see it's what, $22 million to almost $23 million of cash and cash equivalents there. And then also some investments down here designated for capital acquisitions. And we'll see that again in the second report or a perspective of how much cash that is in relationship to the size of your organization. The Medicare cost report settlements are in this estimated third-party payer settlement. It's a combination of the estimated receivable from Medicare on the 2020 Medicare cost report and then some reserves or some prior year cost reports as they get through the Medicare audit process. And remembering as a critical access hospital, your paid cost for your inpatient outpatient, skilled wing bed and rural health clinics by Medicare and interim rate during the year. And then it's trued up with the cost report at the end of the year to the actual cost. And so every year, there's going to be some receivable or payable amount due to or from Medicare to get trued up to the actual cost. So just the way the system works. And then moving on to the next page, liabilities and net position. And where you'll see one of the main things that is unique this year is you'll see the honored CARES Act Provider Relief Fund of just a little less than $3.3 million. And that you receive, district received just a little under $6.4 million in CARES Act Provider Relief Fund. And as of the end of 2020, 3.3 million was not recognized yet as revenue for, to meet qualifying expenses and to cover lost revenue per the regulations. I'm just going to jump ahead because these two numbers are interrelated. But down here, you'll see CARES Act Provider Relief Funds of 3.1 million that were recognized as revenue in fiscal year 20, based on qualifying expenses and lost revenue calculations. And there's a little twist to this with, when we were first planning the audit several months ago, we thought we were going to be required to do a single audit because the CARES Act money is federal funds. And at some point, it's going to be audited. The expectation was you were going to have to report, all hospitals were going to have to report to DHHS by February 15th. Well, the reporting portal has never opened and there's really been silence for several months now on what's going to happen. I think there's expectation that the reporting will now be for an 18-month period or maybe even a two-year period at the end of 2021. And that the single audit is probably not going to be required for fiscal year or calendar year 2020, but still at this point, technically, we might have to circle back and do additional single audit procedures on the provider relief funds. But it can't be audited until you actually report it to DHHS and until they open the portal and everybody can actually report it. There's not going to be a finality in how that exactly works. But through the work that we've done as the auditors and Scott and team have done internally, it's a good estimate of what you should be able to keep basis as of December 31st, 2020 and what's available for 2021. So still a moving target in that regard. It just said a long-term debt, just plan, no new debt. That's what's significant and what's not there, no new debt issuance this year. Then you get to the next page, which is the statement of revenues and expenses and changes in net position or income statement. And interesting in the sense that net patient service revenue increased 7% from the previous year, as you really have a lot of offset, it still grew even though there was less care provided in certain areas because of COVID-19 with the suspension of activities and then people reluctant to come back. But there was more lab testing for COVID-19. There was some responses to that and, but you also had growth in some of your clinic practices through the year and other service lines. And then just really generally improvements in your revenue cycle and collection rates that more than offset the COVID-19 decreases. So a lot of moving parts, but in the end, it was up 7% from the previous year. So that's good. Then you get to your expenses, which in total were up 10% with some of that expenses with the growth in the service line and also the response to COVID-19 with the PPP, COVID testing, everything you needed to do to be safer and providing healthcare for your employees and your patients and everyone. So those expenses are in there as well, along with the growth in the service line. And so then you get to your operating income, which you'll see is down about 2.1 million from the previous year, as you had those increased expenses due to COVID and some of the lost revenue due to COVID. And I think what this, you know, what the CARES Act does and what turns out in a lot of, most of these, all the reports I've been giving, is that you go, that decrease in operating revenue and then you come down to your non-operating revenue. That's where accounting standards say the CARES Act Provider Relief Fund should be reported. And you'll see your 3.1 million from the federal government and another $425,000 from other federal and state sources, a little over 3.5 million that backfills that loss in the operating revenue income. And you see that kind, doesn't match up exactly one for one because there's other factors in there, but almost all these reports I've given, you'll see operating income decrease or the operating loss get bigger in organizations, but it's about exactly or not exactly, relatively the same as what the additional CARES Act funding was, which shows that it is doing what was intended to backfill the impact of COVID. The other unique thing this year is way down here at the bottom is the release of the Rural Health Clinic Medicaid Managed Care reconciliations from back from 2014 through 2017. There was calculations where the district on the rural health clinics owed some money back to the state or theoretically getting overpaid for some Medicaid managed care visits in the rural health clinics. Through some legislative action, that debt was forgiven early in 2020. So, or that obligation was forgiven by the state through some legislative action. And so that shows up as revenue this year as previously recorded as a reduction in net patient service revenue because I thought it was owed back to the state and it was, based on the rules at the time, but now it's forgiven. And so you get to a change in net position after all that that went on this year of a positive $6.4 million compared to the, just a little under 3.7 in the previous year. And then, moving on, payment of cash flows, not going to hit that too much. And then getting to the notes to the financial statements. I always like to point out at this, for the notes, they are important to the financial statements. They serve three primary purposes, with the first part being who you are as a reporting entity, public hospital district, the relationship with the foundation and how you're governed and the services you provide. And then it goes into the summary of significant accounting policies, which is how different transactions and balances are reported or recognized in the financial statements. So good reading on how the financial statements work. And then the rest of the notes are additional disclosures and information on things that the readers of the financial statements would want to know about the organization. And thinking that audited financial statements do serve a purpose for management and definitely serve a purpose for you as the board of commissioners in your governance and oversight role, but they're designed for people outside the organization, citizens, lenders, insurers and what they would want to know. That's in the notes. Then I'm going to jump ahead and just hit the things that are new, go way ahead, mostly just similar information to the past. I'm going to get all the way, net patient service revenue note. I always like to just point this out because I think it does, a key takeaway is always just how much any healthcare organization is Medicare and Medicaid dependent. And Medicare is about 37% of your net patient service revenue and Medicaid 15%. So just a bit over half is due to Medicare and Medicaid traditional payment client, payment systems and then also the managed care systems of both the state and Medicare Advantage lumped together there. So just a little over half comes to those that are either cost-based or kind of quasi-cost-based systems, which is low, on the lower end, you'll see for most critical access hospitals, typically see 60 to 80% Medicare and Medicaid. That's good. So that just means you have other payers that are paying more than cost. And then a couple of new notes this year. We've already talked about all this, so with the Rural Health Clinic Medicaid Managed Care Reconciliation Settlements, information on that and the CARES Act Provider Relief Fund. A couple of notes on commitments under non-cancible operating leases. I just point this out that in this, in the calendar year 2022, so actually, you know, a few months from now when that starts, hard to believe that starts soon, is that capital leases, all leases for the most part will now would have to be shown as assets on the balance sheet with the corresponding liability. So there's going to be some debt that gets added to the books at the start of January 1, 2022. So keeping that in mind for leased building, real estate, leased equipment, that'd be a significant accounting change. It's going to happen in 2022. And it was delayed. It was actually supposed to have happened sooner, but because of the COVID-19 pandemic, the implementation dates were delayed. The, a note on the line of credit that's outstanding, the $5 billion with Cashmere Valley Bank. And then a note, again, an additional note this year on COVID-19 pandemic and just general information there. And then to the second of the two auditors' reports, this is where we give our report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. It's required, I got, it's done in accordance with government auditing standards and required because you're a public hospital district in the state of Washington. The main takeaways from this is what's got there is that there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies reported. So no findings are reported, which is good. And we do report material weaknesses and significant deficiencies in quite a few audits. So it's not a given that it'll be finding free. And so that's a good indicator. Scott, Kelly, Jason and all the rest of the accounting and finance team are doing a good job and keeping the financial records in shape. Any questions on the audit, audited financial statements? Nope. Nope. All right. I will go to the financial indicators then. And this is a byproduct that, of the audit where we present some ratios in a more, helps provide the numbers in a more visual fashion. You can see relationships better of how the numbers relate to the size of your organization. There's trends and then there's some benchmark comparisons to some medians of some like hospital groups. So starting with the total margin, you can see a very positive 6.7%, with even the COVID disruptions, COVID relief money, rural health clinic write-off and then just generally growth in your operations have a very, a positive 6.7% margin. And in anything in the 3% to 6% range is what you'd be shooting for and you've been in that range for several years now. And you could see the medians over here to the right for different hospital groups, half below and half above that number. So good positive results. The operating margin, as we talked about, because of the additional expenses and response to COVID and some of the interruptions in service and the growth, down, but still positive. Days cash on hand is, at December 31st was 161 days. It does assume that you won't earn the, this number way we calculated assumes you wouldn't recognize the rest or get to keep the rest of the unearned CARES Act, just to kind of put that in perspective. If you, when you, that unearned CARES Act money represents another 14 days of cash on hand. So number is really around 175 days, but 14 days is a potential, not to be earned number, but still growth in your cash and your position. But that cash that we said on the cash, showed on the cash, cash equivalent line and the amounts that are reserved for future capital acquisitions represents 161 days of operating expenses. I think this, this graph puts that cash number in perspective to the size of your organization. And current ratio, measure of liquidity, the ability to meet current obligations as they come due, anything over two to one is fine. And so solidly over that, and that doesn't even include the capital acquisition reserves. Capital expenditures percentage of annual depreciation. This graph attempts to provide some information on showing that you're replacing your equipment at the same rate that it's theoretically getting used up and that anything over 100% is saying you're buying more equipment and the depreciation on equipment. And the years will jump all over the place, but over 100% in the aggregate is showing equipment's replaced. It's not a perfect metric because it doesn't include leased equipment in it, but it does give some indicators to that capital replacement. Long-term debt, what's your debt to equity? See, that's going down as you've paid off debt and had positive additions to your equity or net position. Days in that patient accounts receivable have decreased. You know, as you get further and further out from the Cerner implementation from a few years ago and just revenue cycle improvement, I think this one shows it a little more is that you went down in your gross days, collections and the average days of collects. And you philosophically keep some accounts on your books longer and so they're reserved appropriately and estimated for collect about. You do more in, keep them for collections long. Some organizations write them off really fast. I think that argument, they write them off too fast. You guys keep them to try to collect yourself. So just differences between organizations. Contractual adjustment percentage, how much of every standard charge is not collected? So for every dollar of charges, you get about only 55, 56 cents on the dollar from Medicare, Medicaid and your insurance payers. Bad debt as a percentage of revenue, another, you'll see a very, very consistent and then right, interesting enough, right at the median of the Washington hospitals, but you can see other hospitals, rural hospitals can have much higher percentages. Work with critical access hospitals, you know, quite a few different states and quite a few different sizes, communities and different demographics and communities. And I'll see numbers as low as 1% and I've seen numbers as high as 20% for bad debt. When you get to states that didn't expand Medicaid, it could be pretty high. Bad debt and charity care percent of revenue, you can see it's less than 3% in total with charity care being patients that don't have the financial ability to pay and apply for financial assistance and the bad debt theoretically patients that have the ability to pay and don't pay, even though bad debt certainly includes some that could have applied for financial assistance if they would have done that. So there's that information. And I think I'll paint the story of a solid, not just solid, but good financial position for the solid, good. And then I'll just go into the last report real quickly. There's a letter of what you would want to know from your auditor as the governing board. If there was accounting changes, it would point that out. No accounting changes this year. There are three major significant estimates in the financial statements with the allowance for uncollectible accounts always being an estimate. And then the settlements for Medicare is an estimate as well, that they will change, not materially, but there will be some change before they're finalized. And then this year, another significant estimate is with the CARES Act Provider Relief Fund of what, exactly what revenue, how much of that can be recognized as revenue. It's based on the best interpretations of the laws and regulations and guidance we all have today, which has, is not in all manners real clear. And then no difficulties in performing the audit. That's good to know. The other thing that's important to know is that there's, was no material audit adjustments proposed by the auditors when you're, and if we came in as the auditors and it was us that found a material error and proposed an adjustment, we would let you know about that. And the good thing of not having that is that it gives you more assurance that the information you're getting on a monthly basis from your finance team is accurate. If your auditors are fixing it at the end of the year, it's more likely that what you're getting on a monthly basis isn't accurate either. So that's a good indicator, what this is telling you. A new thing this year is that technically the foundation of Kitata Valley Healthcare is a component, should be a component unit of the district. And we are just letting you know that as the governing board, that it's not included. And that's very common for public hospital districts and other government hospitals not to include the foundations in the reporting entity, just to let you know that it is technically by government accounting standards, something that should be included in the financial statements, but very common to not include, more common to not include than to include. And that is the main takeaways in a relatively straightforward audit report because there's no findings and the financial results were good, even considering all the COVID-19 impacts.
Yeah, straightforward is good. We don't want anything exciting or shocking. That's all right.
Yeah. You only want my report to be so exciting, right?
I really want to just to thank Kelly and Jason and Scott in no particular order. Jason and Scott have taken on doing the cost report so that throughout the year, we know fairly, for some certain people, they're going to be paid. So that is wonderful. And Kelly, I just wanted to point out, in addition to being cute age, is also in charge of the foundation, she's been in hospital too. So this is her day job. We have her doing a lot of other workouts, but she's doing absolutely professional stuff.
Yeah.
Great. Any, yeah, I want to echo that. Appreciate everybody working on this and appreciate the presentation, Tom. Always good to kind of run through it and see, see how we compare.
Thank you. Maybe next year it can be live and in person again. So that would be, that would be fun.
Any other questions? Yeah, thank you. So do we need a vote to accept?
Good night.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we, we would like to have a motion to accept the audit.
To accept the audit.
Motion, second by Terry. Terry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, we have a presentation by Linda. Our annual compliance report.
I'll do my best to talk really loud. I know, it's hard to hear. I go home and my husband's saying I'm yelling because I told him that. So they're right here, he's not yelling. So in the way the packet's set up, it looks like there's a couple of policies that we've made some changes. These are compliance policies and that's sort of how these work. Pointing out some of the changes, bring your attention and there's no need to approve this for the fact that you have new demo products and feedback. So the compliance policy is what we have on page 14. And some of the changes that were made with cooperation with the compliance committee is we recognized the way we were before, if there was a conflict that's been just relevant to the board members, how was that, and had to do that. And so actually, we did some research and have some help through the Washington Compliance Committee and attorneys on them. They referred us to this, there is an RCW that does apply to that. And the recommendation was to adhere to that, investigate to something you can and just identify what would be needed to mitigate risk and actions that need to be taken or to that. So that's why that was added to the policy. And that's the fourth paragraph, hang on, right above responsibilities. Just governing members build and control compliance interests according to this policy and takes that to mitigate risk allowable by chapter 42.23. Other update, we find on the next page, the one page 18, we're going to, by actual policy. If on page 15, wanted to say that there was like cadence for having to be an annual, not only education on the process, but also you'll see that there's expectation to have an annual disclosure statement completed every year by the years of. annual disclosure statement completed every year by the years of KPH and also by the board. And the recommendation for retainment of these documents this year, so they need to work this out after that time period for that. So the next is the disclosure document and that's from nineteen, I'm sure we had requested some feedback. There were changes that we felt were necessary to show that it wasn't the compliance officer or just the director that was making determinations if there was a conflict of interest or if the mitigation actions that were recommended or offered up by the staff member or leader was appropriate. And so on section six, if anyone answered yes to having a conflict or conflict of interest, they would know what they plan to do to address that. And then on the final office part, what we would be doing is we would review that, make sure that our information that we have to determine is to be able to give a second way to gauge that risk. If there's any additional recommendations, we would bring them back to that staff member or leader and then they would actually sign the documents as they're agreeing to comply. So over chance. Any questions or people?
I remember, I mean, it's been several years ago, having a couple of years we signed off on a conflict of interest, but we're gonna do it annually now.
Yes.
Yep.
And so I just think it's been a calendar reminder and work with Andy Vee, we can remember that he goes out there and gets it back and again, have that documented that they can receive.
Yeah.
The logs.
Yes.
So this thing could be triggered, I think recall, maybe something has changed.
That's a good point because many things don't really come to top of mind as being a conflict until we're actively speaking, do we have that conflict? So I think visiting us is a regular.
We've talked previously about how broadly we're defining some of this stuff, like secure, or may secure services from KPH. I mean, obviously, the sort of paradigm case of this is someone who's purchasing, selling us stuff or buying a bunch of stuff. But, you know, it's a small town, so pretty much every, everything is buying something from, from us. Have you, do you ever thought about how that's, I mean, the example I have to mind is the place I work, obviously, it's central, right? I mean, they might enter the partnerships with us, but is that the sort of thing that counts is?
I think it's the difference on whether or not you would have an influence on the decision-making.
None.
Any hybriding going on and?
Yeah, okay, all right, good to know. That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
The next document is the two thousand twenty compliance work plan. And this was the work plan, it was approved last year and we have activities based on the result or some of the areas that we normally focus on based off of those seven elements of effective compliance program. And then reporting out, so how well did we, did we meet our targets on that? Some of these are just ongoing kind of best practice ensuring like policy, making sure that we not only have them, but we review them and update them as needed. But we also have a compliance program, compliance program, um, inhales and expectations that we have, like photo conduct. So one of the things that is noted on the plus on number three, that's something that is a big focus when you read is the, they want to see what kind of education's being done to make sure employees are aware of what's expected of them. And so they want to see kind of an ongoing process, not only to educate in a standing item, but also as things come up. And so we have, what we were hoping to discover was that staff would review the photo conduct annually and also that they, and the target is always that all staff were assigned this weekly assignment. And we didn't meet that target that we did two years last year, we were at ninety percent last year compared to eighty-four, but we're always looking for ways to try to make it easier for them to get that education banned with the privacy training of eighty-eight percent. So the idea with step development is we would be kind of compiling this together. So instead of, when they go to these libraries, we're saying, whole list of assignments that they have, kind of leave them all together under one assignment, they would just go from one policy to review to to any other document or training format. And then they would use them, they wouldn't be overwhelmingly, largely, that would make them feel like it's not getting much overwhelming. The other thing is ensuring that we're doing these kind of different kinds of one-point lessons through announcements or touch huddles, because as things are identified, you want to give it right then and ensure that they understand whether, if it's a process change or if it's just an education thing. And with privacy, that comes up more often. You know, we're discovering where maybe there's ways that we can protect information better and through mediation, whether it's through some sort of technology news or just a better understanding of when to appropriately to look into a record that doesn't really relate to your work and is it specific to your area of work? The other is responding to patients, to concerns, either about patients, families, staff members, you know, compliance, and timely manner. And as we know, we do recover, we do back to them. Our reports were up, we had four in two thousand nineteen, we had eleven last year. Reporting is good and we just had a few that we found were actually firm and, you know, just a just type action for them as well. The other on the following page, and we're looking at under number six, auditing and monitoring. So just anytime we have any third party go, we'll look at what we're doing is we'd also say for us to not have any kind of bias of evaluation of, you know, are we meeting the standards? And with those findings, are we taking some action to make improvements? And so the security risk assessment is crucial. I mean, all quarterly understand what the risk is in healthcare with breaches and there's, you know, it's been given a lot of attention and the justice team, they still would just like to show these assessments are occurring. And actually, two thousand twenty is the first time we've done more of a virtual format because it wasn't appropriate for them to be on site. But again, when they get these findings, what are the highest risk areas of how to mitigate them? And so to see steady improvement with that. The other thing is we, the Cerner coding audit also was beneficial and that was completed. Actually, we, we did well, we took that, that recognizing there were changes made or coding, so it seems very appropriate to get another audit done and see how we'll deal with those changes and go to get that feedback to providers and. So anything you'd like to add?
No, it's just we, we have, you know, we had a significant change in how professionals, ours are coded at the first of the year. And so we, Cindy Kelly, I think it's not going, we've already contracted for a company to come do that. If it's not occurring right now, it's going to occur very shortly. We wanted to do it after about the first quarter or so. So doctors had a chance to work the system, HIM department also coded the system, so.
So they'll tell us if we're over coding and under coding?
Correct. It's either or. We want, we want to be, the goal is to be compliant and we don't want to be high, we don't want to be low.
Yeah, that documentation is really supporting what we're, we're like, but yeah, the tool really was to get that to the providers so they can have a better understanding and really show where those areas of ensuring that their documentation is really, but again, those changes, it was like, let's really see now what's going on and.
And those changes, I mean, they're pretty significant. No one really knows you're doing it the right way right now. It's kind of trying to do the best they can. Cause it's more off of the time, provider time and effort, complexity.
So, yeah, so before Linda goes into the next document, which is the annual report, I want to get the board that I think Linda does an amazing job at compliance and we do everything that we are required to do, but there is so much more, particularly in terms of education and, you know, reaching out to providers. There's so much more that we could be doing. And Linda also is our risk manager, so her plate is very full. And if I looked at two thousand twenty-two, all the clinics that we've acquired are, you know, all the different sorts of services we're filling, you will probably hear us asking for more resources for compliance, something like a full-time compliance person. So again, Linda's doing everything we have to get done, but there's just so much education and so much more we could be doing for each of our employees and providers. So heads up. I hadn't told Scott that, so make a note for that.
That's okay. And knowing that we have well-trained coders looking at everything and you have a third party outside, third party coming in looking at what we do, you don't want to get sideways with the non-compliant, it's, there's just a ton of risk and want, that would be a physician's well worth.
Good. And then a few other parts to that, the auditing of the program is just, you know, the very essential program, I would say, patients and also to organization and it takes, there's a lot of other things needed to ensure that we are, that the claims are appropriate. In the annual report, it actually, it needs is there to, monitoring that, that's also a huge part of life of us, you know, as well to the greatest possible that's moving on findings and improvement. So the annual report is the next document, page twenty-seven. And one of the things that we all recognize is that the headcount was, it's gonna be a challenge, but to try to ensure compliance with the rapid changes that are going on, the waivers that came across that were approved to allow us to care for our patients more efficiently and also ensuring that we have clearly, uh, telehealth, all these different billing changes. You know, hopefully there's some work so hard to do there to do it, which is kind of ensure compliance throughout the organization, the best that they can. So looking at, again, at the, basically the elements that's thrown down, again, we had policies and features, so Cindy Kelly has been working very hard to ensure that there's clear policies to guide staff on some of the areas that they may not have that knowledge base for or areas that we, we can build it so we can have these policies like to show they're reading the standards. And so some of those were related to, to privacy with research, partnering. And one of the things that's coming up is sometimes patients may access records and there's rare occasions where that is not the best objective to future risk and to the patient. And so those are challenging situations and what are those regulations that have we ensure that we're doing the right thing? So we design of those policies that either are revised or updated for that. On the other, the next page, we do have Amanda Scott, which, you know, is the new leader. She's a great division to our compliance committee. And we have, every Monday, we have a huddle meeting with HR and with quality and management to do a check-in and see if there's anything that's been up. She's kind of great, great leader to work with. On the following page, on page twenty-nine, we're talking about education and training. And again, I do always really emphasizing when we are aware of areas of risk and are we getting that education out there to those that need it and ensuring that we're doing that timely. So one of the things that we try to do is, again, the one-point lessons and it's focusing on things like, do you know, and areas, things like, you know, receiving gifts or tips from individuals or providers where they have reps from medical companies with equipment and devices, how do we manage those situations? Another area, we are also most often attending the Washington Law House Compliance Committee and it's been a great resource for having some heads up of those changes, regulatory changes. Like, you know, there was another one coming up July first and so they'll notice that as the heads up, we'll give those out to leaders and try to get some planning going on that. We already talked about education and, you know, options for that, compliance investigations and that's one of the, we've worked all of these, all these conferences that we've interviewed in us. And in two thousand twenty, we had four of them that came through the compliance hotline. And right now, that's a number, they just only come to my office home, they're engaged for compliance. And so we have actually get four. In two thousand nineteen, we had two and two thousand, I think, there's an uptick that way. So there's like compliance, so we had three reports in that way. There was additional emails related to a concern, but that was another avenue that passed the reporting. And the face-to-face reports and one of the letters of a patient that resulted in all these, we managed to get them, get an investigation initiated right away, meaning not target a few different states and getting response. The other thing to look at is on page thirty-one, we are talking about auditing and that was, there is the January first, we had that transparency ruling that came out and on our website, we have.
And it's about forty-two hundred more. All of our, all of our hospital charges are posted on the website. And then there's some three hundred or something like that, special charges that Medicare wants you to particularly identify. We don't do all of those procedures, but all of them.
So the thing, you know, with treasury of patients, they, they want to know ahead time as much as possible with potential financial impacts to them. And there's been times when the quality department's been able to, to that and kind of show them where they can be checking to see if there's ideas. Plus, we have the financial assistance service through, huge financial services to give estimates, something that they can do prior to a planned procedure. Something that's really been focused on a lot in compliance professions and ensuring that all organizations are up to, up to date on meeting that requirement.
I have a question. I remember hearing about this requirement. What sort of, are there a lot of details about how you're supposed to post it, how you're supposed to make it available, what you're supposed to include, or is it just, does it just talk about transparency?
All of that, absolutely. That's the machinery, machine, machine readable format. Jason helped prepare this. Jason, can you add? Jason, can you add some color to the comment about, to Matt's question about the price transparency information we put out on the website?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just like what you said, it's machine readable, so we have it in Excel version. Some facilities I've looked at, you know, they kind of go another step and they've partnered with some other vendors to do a more like app-type search thing, but we just posted all the 300 required posting or required charges, plus all of our major payers or all of our commercial payers and what the net cost would be after contractual adjustments per our contracts the best we could. It's, it's a pretty dry document, but it is on our website and you can all go take a peek at it.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be interesting to look at. Is there, where is it on the website?
You should.
Under billing?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah. And then also on there that's been, I use, so our whole Charge Master is posted on there as well, our whole facility Charge Master. And we'll use that and compare it to other facilities as well. So it's been, you can search other hospitals. I just usually Google the hospital and the Charge Master and that usually pops up. And you can do the same for us.
So, and it'll, it'll actually say what insurance covers.
That's, that was one of the new requirements. You needed to show the amount, the allowed amount for various insurance payers.
I see.
So can I, the caution there is we can show that we're going to be paid 75% of charges for our patients. We can't tell the patient whether they have a $10,000 deductible or a $500 deductible. And I really, it's, I hope it's not misleading. I hope it's more helpful than misleading.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Jason. Thanks, Michelle, for bringing that up.
Yeah. The other piece on it too is if somebody comes in for even just a lab test, it's multiple pieces. So one lab test is usually, can be five or six different charges plus a lab draw. So it's not really super helpful to the, your standard patient. They're not going to know to look for all the different components.
Well, you can only do so much.
Take some time there, at least there.
Okay, thank you.
Just some little bit of details, like I was mentioning on page 32, starting two years ago, audits and there was one that was going to do things that were reviewed. And of those, there was 22 findings that they investigated further and officially made to reverse the case. And it was everything related to, you know, the provider may have been no longer working for us during that time period and had to fix that adjustment. And so it was something, it was things that were manageable and it was caught early. And I think that was one of the demonstrations of why it's so important to really have timely audits and take action right away. And so with every month, they're looking at, if we can get their findings, especially maybe action doing, if there's possible changes that need to be done or just education to, there, so that's important and we want to be able to do that around. The other part on page 33, I just wanted to emphasize that, you know, screening, friction screening or background checks and things like that, that, you know, I wasn't sure you're aware of, but all the volunteers also filed our check, improving the, the things we can to protect it, we need to serve them. And if it is, then we don't allow the volunteer to be on the premises. So it was our industry volunteers who were through for that. And when the first, you see as you're walking to the hospital, one of the friends and through the back, so checking is, you know, vendors are coming in, ensuring that, one, that they are legitimate to be here, there isn't alert if they haven't met the standards that are set up, which we have, we have more, you know, 16% increase compared to the other pandemic. So one of the things that I've been working with, you know, through the commissioners, we've created the work group, we're planning ahead for my dashboard and what methods would be, demonstrate areas that we need to kind of focus on. And one of the things that we're looking at, our reporting system is something that we get kind of, like, if we have rest with a live person, we have to, and evaluating that and seeing something that comes out of it and seeing if we, it's increased reporting and reporting just to really identify those things out there that we are aware of and looking into them and having that early heads up. So getting them when they're small and not letting them turn into a large type of issue at all. So most of them, you know, access to data with the non-compliance. Having that cultural where stuff is feeling, if somebody's listening, it's okay for me to be got, you know, I'm just doing it in my best interest. And if they're going to look in it, it's because I can get back to you on reviewing the answer. And the final thing is the code of conduct. There was only one change that we did not make in page 47. And we kept some things that came up that felt like there's a need for certain, so it's always been a lot of talk about whether the patient or a vendor that they may want to provide a gift to an individual, a minor, or office, you know, like a light tunnel line or something like that. So sometimes we actually had, there was a question whether or not it's okay for staff to do other staff, like, so it wasn't really a question, or that we could make a change. The same type of ideals are expected, you know, would be intent of that and, and the value of looking at it, just like give the wrong impression. It's not a need for control, you know, where it's providing any feedback.
Yeah, I had a question about that little piece. So is there any reason for it to be approved by the board? Like, does it give it a more?
No, it appears before we had, as far as my understanding is, it's not a board policy, it's a client policy. So just ensuring that we're having that opportunity to review it, provide feedback and get notes from the board, did review it, all the demonstration that you made over there.
Okay.
If you find anything that was contrary to that, please let me know. And that is my, that was the report. Anything they do like more, more intentional, like, provide?
So you reported like 45 privacy investigations with seven reportable privacy breaches?
Yes.
You report that to?
To AKHS, so that's done every year by then. And I think there's a date of the first one here.
Okay, thank you.
Are the breaches specifically accidental, unintentional?
By the way, as far as they are, it's sometimes rationalized, they rationalize it, especially after, patient information. So those are some of the things that we're, intentional, follow it. There's just processes, kind of deviation, whether it's some sort of environmental factors that led to that or kind of fast-paced healthcare system and ensuring that we try to make the environment, to, to doing the right thing all the time. I was even thinking, so when I was printing out the, the annual report, and then the quality department, we're printing a lot of different things, especially risk management, there's records that are printed, whether it's related to, risk for evaluating, I think, depending on how they're getting processed through the printer, potentially a record to get in between other partners, you know. So, you know, having to look at each page before you're putting them together is something that's tough to do, so.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Linda. So we'll move on to item six, reports and dashboards, quality with Andy Olson, Chief Quality Officer.
So I just want to point out that I was excited to report on non-COVID projects.
Yeah.
And it was, it was nice to have time to reflect on the non-COVID work that's done. So, but other than that, I don't have anything to add unless you have questions.
I was really excited to see that you guys are going to get the world grand rounds going again, because that's very, I know that's really, I mean, a really great thing that you guys do. And thanks to Linda to, it looks like you're getting those going, so thanks for doing that.
Yeah, and by fall, we'll have, play on the rest of the schedule again. And so we can have a lot of people.
Great, yeah. Any other questions? All right, thank you. CEO report, Julie?
Yeah, I've got some things I would like to talk about. First of all, thank you, Michelle, for organizing the great ice cream thank you party. And I know all of the commissioners have signed up to help hand out ice cream and our KDH giveaway. So thank you very much for that. I think the employees would rather speak commissioners than the rest of us, so appreciate your time.
I also wanted to talk a little bit about the vaccine clinic and jump in anytime, Mandy. You know, we talked last month, I think, about winding down the efforts of the mask act. Well, shortly thereafter, they announced that anybody 12 years old and older was eligible for some of the vaccines. So we had thought that we would be closing down that facility at the beginning of June. Right now, it looks like we'll be there through at least mid-June. They gave up the facilities through the end of June. But we went on a little tour yesterday and in terms of vaccines going forward, we looked at how we might be able to do vaccines in the same building where we have testing and whether that was different areas of the buildings or different times in the building. We also know that we'll be called at times to do pop-ups, sort of go out to school, go out to an employer, kind of thing. At the end of the day, I believe what we're going to find we're doing is bringing our interim vaccine strategy back up on the second floor. So that gives us more room to work with. We don't have, is the testing facility, Family Medicine Ellensburg Building is going to get tight really quickly if for some reason there's, you know, a group of people who want to come through and be vaccinated. We think one of the reasons it would serve us better to have vaccine efforts up here is because then public health could say to an employer group of 10 or 12 people, well, you know, just go to the second floor of the hospital and they'll take care of it. So these patients, unlike with the mask act, they will be registered as KDH patients, so we don't have to put all the data into the state system, get it goes in faster and get pulled over through an interface with the state system. So sometime in mid-June, going into July, you can expect some additional activities here around the same. I think, Mandy, we're talking about shutting out half the conference room, because that was, half of it's going to be over next week and she'll see if she can fit it in half or what he thinks. So for the next few weeks from us, but again, if things change, we'll change with it. But that's the plan right now. Anything I missed?
No.
I've heard from numerous people about how good their experience has been at the vaccine clinic. I mean, most recently, my son got, got a shot there. He's 13 years old and went very smoothly and it, so everybody, including my family, is raving about it. So thank you guys for doing that.
And I don't know if you saw, they did receive the health champion.
That's great.
It will be awarded to health.
I love it, yeah.
That's great. I also wanted to talk just briefly about masks, since we're all still wearing them. Vaccinated or not, in the healthcare setting, we continue to require people to be masked here. That includes all of our facilities, so we're going to have one standard. I think the question has been asked, what about radio? Do we go without masks there? The fact of the matter is, we're still engaged with patients and families and a very vulnerable population. So all KDH facilities will have the same standard. So we all look forward to changing it someday. So.
The last thing I want to talk about, and I'm listening to my clinical friends to bail me out here, is the discussion about myocarditis, predigus, and parotiditis that's going around. And I just, this morning, WISHA and the Department of Health convened the CEOs to talk about the path that story and that data is taking. On May 21st, two of the large hospitals in East King County, so that would be Overlake and Evergreen, and they have a clinically-integrated network, so a lot of their docs work together. Those two hospitals together identified that they had 10 cases of myocarditis. So they contacted WISHA, said this feels unusual, there is among vaccinated, the vaccinated population. WISHA reached out to the Department of Health and by the end of the day, last Friday, the 21st, they had convened all of the chief medical officers of the large system as well as the large hospital and said, have you guys had any similar experiences? The answer was, we don't know because we haven't been looking. So over the weekend, again, keeping in mind, we learned about this the 21st and they've already mobilized the 21st. They have those chief medical officers with their system going through the records to determine if there was a pattern. On Monday, they reported back that statewide, within those systems, there were 35 cases that fit something that looked like that profile. And again, they're working with the Department of Health and WISHA. Scott Lindquist is the physician who leads the Washington State Department of Health and he is a pediatric epidemiologist. The folks that we are seeing this in are males between the ages of 15 and 30. If they do come down with the infection, it is mild and there are no deaths reported with it at this point. What they don't have is any kind of baseline. So this is a condition that follows infection and it's not incredibly unusual. So they're trying to figure out what the baseline is, how far above baseline we may be and intact if it's really within this population. The state of Washington also reached out to the CDC and brought this to their attention and asked for their help. They have been remarkably kind of hands-off. They've, you know, instructed the Washington State Department of Health to continue to do what they're doing and give back to them what the final value. What they have instructed us to do, since we were not included in that first group that went through the record, is to look and see if we have any cases that maybe have these patterns that already happened. And we do look at all the cases every day to see, no, and have a, like, if they already identified.
Great.
So they've asked that we report that into the state reporting system, but that takes a long time to turn over. So they've also asked that we report to the local health jurisdiction. And I will tell you, Friday night, I got a call from Dr. Larson to let me know that you guys were working on looking at cases Dr. Martin was aware, so that we all have this top of mind. So I appreciate all the communication internally at KDH. What they're saying we should not do is make public health recommendations. This is not a call to change what we're saying about vaccine efforts. Again, based on, the press has been very topical and thoughtful about how they have reported this. They have not blown it up. We're starting with a growth case number, that is all the cases, and then they We're starting with a gross case number, that is all the cases, and then they have to eliminate the ones that look like there were other pathogens involved or other things that may have caused it. So everybody's just proceeding with caution and as much transparency as possible. And again, CDC is kind of on speed dial so that we can share what we learn. Anything else I should?
I thought you did awesome.
What was the trigger for diagnosing the patient? Why, how was it found? Was it medical or incidental?
It really was a sharing of information between docs who, hey, wait a minute, the commonality is they have this like infection and they were all vaccinated within a period of time. So other than, it wasn't.
You just testing those usually how they're presenting or.
I was thinking.
They're finding it younger than. And they're. Care afterwards.
Are they finding that it's self-revenue and self-resolving?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think they know yet entirely. They have other kinds of deaths or mild cases.
Obviously, Pfizer must be one of them, since it's under EKG status involved. Moderna as well, or do we know?
I don't think they, I don't think they feel that. I mean, one of the things they consider and they're trying to tease out is myocarditis happens, or, you know, pericarditis, endocarditis, happens, that happens to people, even young people at times. Like, it usually is an infection, you know, of the valve, and there's dental procedures can sometimes be the trigger for that, or piercings. Like, there's other things that can trigger these. So they're trying to tease out, is this normal baseline, you know, conditions that are happening or is it really related to the vaccine?
Which was specific in terms of.
The last thing I want to talk about is the strategic planning retreat that's just coming up. And in your pocket, you have a draft agenda. And I, we have Tricia Senek here, who's going to be joining us. And I think you had a chance to meet her before, but I just wanted to let you know, we're happy to hear any comments on the agenda. There will be 25 people total, so we have 17 staff and commissioners and eight guests that will be joining us. So it's June 30th through July 2nd, not July 1st, July 1st. Not grand prix. I'm really looking forward on this. First of all, Dave, we will be working with Joy Lewis from the American Hospital Association. She is the executive director of the H8 Institute on Equity and Diversity. And she's going to be coming through us with a data-heavy presentation about health disparities. And we've already talked, Dr. Martin, and Carrie, and Mandy, and Amanda and I have talked about identifying some indicators as an employer as well as a provider that will be looking to weave into the strategic work that we're doing to improve our D E R response.
Can you tell me the name of the person?
Joy Lewis. She is Gary's. And then at lunch, Tricia is going to update us on the demographics and what's happening in Kidde County and some of the changes that are being identified in the workforce and in our patient population, just as we emerge from COVID. What does it mean to us that people have become familiar with telemedicine or they're going to be tele-smoothing now rather than driving up the staff? So how might that influence our strategic plan? Any questions on that?
I'm really excited for this. Sure, I'm experienced. Everything will be so relevant.
I got all fired up today. I'm a sort of.
Do you have any meal updates or were you sandwiches?
I don't, oh, yeah, although tomorrow morning.
It might be a little depressing for you, Erica, because Amanda and Jeff and Vicki have done such an excellent job on our, our part of the strategic plan that you may feel like you haven't, like you've been kind of a slacker. So anyway, you know, just be ready for that. Yeah, just, just let you know.
I'm thoroughly bewildered by your presentation, though, too.
Well, I've only been working on it a little bit. The three of them, the three of them have done excellent work.
The matching outfits are coming together.
Yeah.
Really well. Any other questions for me? Anything at all I can answer or?
Hello? Thank you. Operation, we'll start with Chief Missing Officer Vicki.
How are you doing? I'm on page 71. So if there's any questions, I just wanted to. Under the position, we're working very, very closely with Dr. Hoppe. Tricia's kind of heading up that, a little excited she's here, she's the cardiologist. So we'll, she's just great. She's a great teacher, very patient. Because she'll be doing a lot of things we haven't done in quite some time.
Is ED volume connected to COVID or people putting off other things that need to be done?
Yeah, the COVID numbers in the year have gone up over the last month. We're seeing more now than we did when all of this started.
And what's the severity, what's the acuity level?
I think we counted up to 15 people who visited the month so far. Yeah, in the month of May, which is more than we ever had. Repeat that figure again. 15 different patients that have admitted to the patient side for COVID. Their length of stay is anywhere from five days to.
Yeah, I saw that article in the paper. How are things compared to then? I mean, have they used up?
Yeah, this week they're a little better than the previous three to four weeks. The literary stress, the evening staff and the patient staff have just been really dealing with staffing issues and patients take a lot of time because you have to count up every time. And they're frightened. So the staff are doing very, very well today and to command Julie, pass it considerably everything that we've expected them to do and what they're doing, they're doing considerably well. We're still allowing vacations and giving people their time off, which is a struggle staffing-wise. So we have a lot of temporary staff. We will continue to have temporary staff who can help with vacation relief as well to.
Do you know if we're seeing breakthrough patients being admitted or are we fully strong with our vaccine production?
We have seen one, actually officially having, that's the only one. Otherwise, majority of the folks we're seeing have not been vaccinated.
And the one that is, is fully vaccinated two weeks past the last shot?
Anything else, Vicki?
No, unless you have any questions.
I'm worried about the practice case managers.
Oh, right. Right. Yeah, yeah, they still haven't, they still have to identify some, but I think they're working toward that. Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Linda. Hello, Chief. Well, Miranda.
Hi, nice to be here in person this time. Great. I'll just kind of add a little bit about the COVID and the impact on the primary therapy department as well. I know we've had several cases where staff have had to write in the ambulance for transport over. So when you think about that, taking them out of service, out of moving, and then we're having to call in another practitioner to cover the shift. So they've, they've had a lot of impacts this last month, too. The only other addition that I have is, if you haven't been in Upper County, you should go up there at FMC and look across, and the ambulance station is being built, the walls are being framed, and it's just so fantastic to see that happening.
Nice.
Any questions?
The lab is on track for the, it says the design documents have been submitted and everything's looking good, no?
It's going to be in July, hopefully.
Excellent.
I'm very excited.
Great, anything else? Thanks, Anna. And Chief of Clinic Operations.
I only have one patient to report, and that is, we have a PFAC meeting coming up. Yay! So our favorite, our favorite, one of my favorite meetings. So that's our Patient Family Advisory Council, and we had met with John and Erica and had a conversation about PFAC. John had mentioned that it would probably be a better fit for Carrie to actually take that spot on that committee, so we made that quick change. I just wanted to make that announcement. So Carrie's now part of that team, and we'll have that, our second meeting this year for that.
Yes, I am very looking forward to it. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
He said something I shouldn't have said.
I have some really cool shoes to fill.
Yeah, good luck.
Any questions about?
Any updates on what women's health, where we visited? Were they going to test a second product? Is that what you were saying? And have they started, or that will happen after the other one leaves or?
Well, we are actually trying to get an extension for that product to stay because when that settles the rise, it took the representative to actually show up. We couldn't even use it.
Okay.
And so Rachel is negotiating that right now to have an extension to leave, just so we can make sure that this is something we really want to do and be able to use that on some patient cases. Meanwhile, yes, we have been working with materials management or other folks on the scope, and nothing, there's, there's one potential, but everything else has been sort of a wash.
Okay.
So this might be obvious to everybody else, but could you explain rooming criteria to me?
Oh, sure. No, I should have put that in there. But rooming criteria is, this is something we've worked on for the last several years in terms of when you are checked in by a medical assistant, they have a table that says, okay, you're coming in for hypertension, so these are the things that we need to do. The vitals that you would need to do, or you're coming in for diabetes, or you need to add the monophyll in it. You're coming in for an annual evaluation. So on one side of the table, it has your vivid, and then on the other side of the table, it has the things that the medical assistants to do. That's to create a standard experience for the physician, but more importantly, for the patient. So they know, I'm coming in for this, and these are all the things that are going to happen to me. And so that also means if that flows through different clinics, then that, that also is the same wherever they go.
All right, thank you.
I would also just like to point out that in two of our specialty clinics, ENT and nephrologists, we have now moved to ATC divisions above those specialties because they become very busy very quickly. So, and it looks like we may be able to hire them quickly, quickly. And I would guess that by this time in June, we'll be talking about someone for cardiology.
Oh, and neurology's knocking on the door. Oh, yeah. Everything.
The lumbar puncture sounds fairly unique for a rural hospital. Is that an accurate statement or?
No, not really. And it's something we've actually done in the past. This is kind of a, it's a first stage or a groundhog thing, like Vicki was saying, we've done these things. It's just sort of dusting it off in our minds and dusting off our, our standard operating procedures. How is it that we do that again? But when I was at internal medicine a billion years ago, we did this all the time.
Excellent.
Yes, I sure do. I remember we did.
Yeah, I did internal, lumbar punctures, thoracospesas. We did sigmoidoscopies where the break room is right now, but we won't be doing that.
Not the break room, no.
Right.
I didn't think I needed the break room.
That's right.
Thank you. Any other questions? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Medical Staff, Dr. Bryan.
Thank you. Nice to be here. Thank you. You know, we have a short list this month. Dean Breton is up for a reappointment. John Sand is up for a reappointment. Amy Thomas, well, is up. Stuart Kerr, orthopedist, has contacted to cover a call for orthopedics, he's an orthopedic doctor. Was in Manachee in Alaska, now he's on the west side. He's previously, that's an acquired interest of us to actually practice here. And lastly, Dr. Hoppe, was last month, went to internal medicine, or to internal medicine. Now we've created a cardiology privileges form, and she applied for cardiology privileges now officially, which the NEC reviewed and recommended the board approve these appointments.
So I would move to approve the five appointments.
John, I'd like to hear, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Anything else, Dr. Bryan?
He is on vacation. But we were going to take this opportunity to show you, as you recall, we are going to do some provider spotlight. The two purposes of these spotlights are basically for the public and for providers. What you're going to see tonight is the rough draft, almost final version of Dr. Petty. And the reason I say almost is because we'll see here towards the end when he's talking about communication strategies, he's talking about how he communicates with providers back and forth. So those two things will be split out on it. But this will just give you an idea. Can I, while you do that, can I, this is something I'd like to bring to the board on a monthly basis, which is bringing a spotlight of one of our providers. But again, I hope to walk into the clinic and see these playing on the electronic boards there, and then also in their provider meetings, because it is amazing to go to a provider meeting a year and a half after we added ENT and have somebody go, oh, yeah, we have ENT. Really using this to push out our services among our providers.
And you're really seeing it more often, whereas, you know, key players on websites when patients are looking for providers, the expectation is that they're qualified. People are wanting to know if they can relate to them, and so this is a little personal touch.
So my name is Dr. Christopher Petty. I'm a general surgeon here at Kidde Valley Healthcare. I did both a general surgery and a co-worthful fellowship. I finished my general surgery at Swedish Medical Center in 2005, finished my co-worthful fellowship in 2006. So technically, I'm double-boarded at this point. What drew me to surgery is I was able to use my mind and able to use my hands. I'm able to deal with both chronic problems and acute problems, and I get a variety. I get 15-year-olds, less than 9-year-olds, I get problems that can be solved in a single visit, and I get patients I can follow for years. And then I also get small cases and I get big, large bowel cases, so I get a lot of variety. So I did a general surgery residency. So I do mostly intradominal things, where we do gall bladders, we do hernias, mix it as that type of acute care surgery. And then I also did a co-worthful fellowship, which is more of my specialty. So that includes colon cancer, rectal cancers, anal cancers, implantary bowel disease, diaphragmatic itis, and just various interruptive problems such as fistulas, fissures, and the good old fashioned hemorrhoid. My personal mission is to have a comfortable interaction. You know, you're having to do things that are often embarrassing that you don't want to talk about, and you have to tell people about this and have people look at you. So I want to have a safe, comfortable interaction. And then obviously, we want to do what every surgeon does and take care of the problem, but make it as easy as it can be. They can expect mostly just a boring visit. We take you in like every other room, we talk to you, the exam itself usually is pretty, fairly quick, and it's always chaperoned. The main goal is to make it a safe interaction. So with primary care physicians, the majority of the coordination will be through the chart. If there's a specific question, something unusual or flat matter, new cancer diagnosis, I will usually call personally. But otherwise, certain have got a very good message system, and most providers, in my experience, rather just look at the chart at the end of the day. This is a very good healthcare community, and we'd like to keep things in the county if we can, and that's part of our mission at this point.
There you go.
So what do you think?
Looks good. Yeah, very good.
So that, it's a rough cut. I'll have finals about early next week, and so they'll be, they're separated out on patients who are in the primary.
You had to start with the hemorrhoid.
It's all about little processes.
This is responsible for.
So finance.
Scott. Thank you. I have heard from Vicky and Ron and Kerry, and they have the reasons that I have many positive numbers to report to the board. We start on page eighty-three, stat page, and everyone here is showing, there's a lot of positive variants, a few negatives, that they don't have too much of an impact. Line twelve, significant positive variance, forty-five percent positive variance with surgery cases. That was very good. Radiology exams, positive. Laboratory on line sixteen, very positive. On line twenty-five, we, this is, Jason is always digging into the numbers, and he, we've had a lot of growth with our clinic and visits, but he thought it was important for us to see that the reason we're at where we are today is because of the access and increase in primary care that occurred years back, and that has led to growth with specialty practices. But if you, if you look on line twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, you can see that we've actually grown in specialty care at a more rapid rate than we've grown recently. We've actually taken a step back a little bit with primary care. So this is just important data to be aware of. So we're, just wanted you to know about that. And then the other, just on this, we'll talk about a little bit later, but days in AR on line thirty-eight and line thirty-one, face catch on hand, line thirty-nine, continue to improve.
So Scott, it looks like the outpatient surgery procedures, it's not, this is not a blip, this is a steady increase.
This is not a, this is not a blip, and maybe, Vicky, do you want to, it's with Dr. Petty, it's Dr. Wickholm Meyer, it's Dr. Zammott.
Ortho.
It's ortho, Dr. Longo. It is not.
The Crossley ward, maybe.
Cleveland, Dr. Yes, Dr. Zabuio and ENT. So this is.
Is it getting challenging to schedule the surgery rooms?
Yes, it is. In June, we're traveling three rooms. So, yeah. Which sounds like a small thing, but the number moving parts, the equipment and anesthesia and drugs and steroids is huge, and many parts are unprofitable.
Is this a matter of some, depending on whether we move from one room to another, depending on how the scheduling, making sure that.
Yeah, we'll be, the ortho rooms are ortho, so you can't really have three orthos on the same time. We ask in just a few minutes for monitoring equipment for rooms three, so.
This actually, this volume may lead to some additional capital. But you can see just on a monthly basis and a year-to-date basis that we've seen significant consistent growth in these departments, and they're the reason for the positive financials. And then if we bounce back to page eighty-two, this is another statistic, you know, but I, lines twenty-six and twenty-seven show the, the seven is the annualized growth without any COVID testing, some of the COVID charges. So we're looking at sixteen percent annualized growth, and this is factoring out any charge master increases. This is just apples to apples. We are doing sixteen percent more work in primary care than we do prior, then a few factor in the COVID, it's almost eighteen point six percent, so. Then jumping to page eighty-four, you see the question of the approval of cash, and then the, yeah, steady for the month, but we had a very good cash month, and then days in AR, and then the growth of operating revenue, and then the payer mix. It used to be as a thirty-four and a half percent commercial payer mix is unusual for critical access hospitals, so we're very fortunate to have that. And then you see the, on page eighty-five, the positive revenue variance, positive positive million dollars above budget, you see five point six million dollar positive variance. Expenses, we are over budget for the month by five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for expenses. Most of the variance is in expenses, is volume related. And year-to-date, we're at a million dollars over budget on expenses, and again, for the most part, it's volume related. So had a, an operating income for April of one point two million dollars, and a net income, a net operating, net income of one point three, and then year-to-date, three point six, net income positive variance of two point three. So very, very good financial numbers to report. And I would say that we have, I think we have done about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of support for the, for the vaccination work that we can potentially sell those carriage dollars that we're spending up on the balance sheet. We also have some of the work remunerated, the expansion of material management, maybe all of that, and expansion of the testing eligible. So there's good financials, and they could actually be better.
And could the lab rebuild also potentially grab some of that?
I would, I, I note that in the management discussion analysis.
A lot of, we have NVNA and audit, that is, I mean, it's a great story, and NVNA and audit, which is usually very, very dry, but Scott has used it to tell the story of COVID and capture those numbers, and really set us up to explain how you think cares. Did a good job of that. Can I just say, usually at the end of the year, it's usually December that we need to come to the board, because our authority, Scott and I, we have the authority to write checks and spend money when you approve the operating budget. So we have the authority to spend as much as you have approved. If we're over budget, we come to you in December, and we ask for additional authority to spend whatever that is. Being this far, growing this fast, and this far ahead of budget, you may see us come back with a revised spending request by September, October.
Then on questions about the financials. Okay. Then there was additional good news on page eighty-nine. This is a grant award for upgrading facilities to make facilities more energy efficient. This is money that will come in the future, and it's not, we have not approved for this in our current financials, so this is future money that will be coming then to the organization. And then on page sixty, Julie alluded to it, her, her reports that there's three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars that have come to help us with some construction costs, the lab, and there was almost three hundred thousand dollars for Hospital District Two. And a couple of people need to be called, pointed out for this. This originally started with Michelle Worrall and her relationship with Representative Ibarra up in Quincy. And then it, we heard about the opportunity, and then we transitioned to Mitchell Rhodes, our grant writer, who worked very closely with Representative Ibarra's office. And so we're, Michelle and Mitchell were major factors in us receiving this money, and then we're really grateful for Representative Ibarra.
Scott, question for you.
Yes.
The grant award letter.
Yes.
When you're studying, I don't know if it comes through email or email, I'm imagining it on the board. Anyhow, it says, does a bullet point of contingency here, so simple feedback, what it's done?
To be honest, at this point, I don't really know. Kelly and Ron and I were on a webinar today with the Department of Commerce, and they were talking about how we're going to apply for, you know, some of the steps to take, and so we're just at the beginning of this.
No complicated formula.
Oh, okay.
That makes sense to me, but I don't know, I don't know for certain.
And KDH was the single largest award.
So that's very good news for those items. And then we have a request to amend our capital expenditure that would allow you to approve our requests for up to sixty-five thousand dollars. And this is an increase from her current authorization threshold of twenty thousand dollars. And some of the items that, that Rhonda or Vicky have, the capital items, they, they come about very quickly as a need, you know, this piece of equipment failed, and we, it's not repairable, and we need to get it quickly and have authority to, and if, depending on when, when it falls in the month with, you can actually wait maybe sixty days or forty-five days, and we, we just need a forum to act. One of the, one of the requests from John is that with, we bring a list of the capital items that are below the threshold just to the finance committee so they can be aware that you as a board are aware of those. We're happy to do that, and we'll start to do that in the future.
Increasingly, one of the things we're seeing is we are interfacing all of our patient care equipment. So we're scrambling at the last minute, trying to see if all the interfaces are accounted for, and if I say hold it, just can't move forward until we know more, we're putting back these things.
So that expenditure policy is, we'd like an action to do that.
Move to approve the increase of authorization for the CEO for capital expenditure.
Move from twenty thousand to sixty-five thousand. Motion by John, again by all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much.
Don't go crazy.
And I guess on line eighty-seven, we don't need to.
Me either.
But we will ask for it never. This is, this is for some, still monitoring equipment for some works in the PACU, and the additional patient surgery, and we need an additional Phillips monitor to monitor our patients. So this is a capital request of thirty-four thousand dollars. Cover the monitoring equipment and the interface.
Julie support it? I'll move to approve.
Motion by John. By Terry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Next item, and Gallagher is here, and Ron is on, he's still on video. This is a renovation of our cafe, and at the last, it's been, it's last dated, and this is to expand to the cafe, and then also create some twenty-four seven access for, it won't be staff twenty-four seven, but it will have food available for patients and staff twenty-four seven. And total, total cost of this is about nine hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And Jim and Ron, why don't you, do you want to talk about what you're thinking?
Sure. I'll go first, Ron. I'm Tim Gallagher, I'm the director of the food nutrition, dietitian here at the hospital. Great, here, thank you. Yeah, so we're looking at our renovation of the cafe to help produce, or help improve the flow. It can be quite bottlenecked. Twenty years ago, it was a bottleneck. Our employees have, our employees, staff have expanded quite a bit, so we have quite a few, new or additional employees. And we're hoping to improve the flow, also utilize that area better for service and production as well. We're hoping to have a twenty-four seven access for our staff members as well as for guests at the hospital, so that visiting patients have a place that they can, they can regroup and talk a little bit, and they need to be out in the middle of the night, that's perfectly fine, we have a place for them. We're looking at purchasing some new equipment so that we can provide additional protection for our staff and our guests, once our guests are able to come back to our cafe for meal services. That in turn will help expand our menu items that we have available for folks. We're looking at expanding outside a little bit, taking over some of the courtyard area and having that a multi-purpose room. We first thought about a glass atrium, but then thinking about the heat that might generate in the middle of summer, we included some really nice windows, and so we'll have a multi-use space there for both dining and also for, for meetings. We have our current cafe conference room, we will take, we're modifying that, and that would be a twenty-four seven area for some food and beverages for staff and guests. What else?
And so currently, when the cafes close, you just have a couple of vending machines, but you cannot, there's no seating area or?
That is correct. That is correct. Yeah, we currently contract out vending with three machines, and that's, that's the only food that is available after six P M.
And what kind of food? Is it just chips and sodas, or is there sandwiches?
Pepsi's, things of that nature, stuff that a dietitian does not approve.
Cardiology, cut.
So in this new design, there'd be a higher quality of food available?
So what we're looking at is artificial intelligence in the food delivery system. There is a piece of equipment called Sally the Robot, and it is actually, it's a, it's a Alamo, an automated Alamo, that would be stocked. There's twenty, twenty-two different containers in it, and you can do a customized salad, you can choose protein choices as well as vegetable choices. do a customized salad, she can choose protein choices as well as vegetable choices. There's also a number of different recipes, like you get a Southwest chicken salad bowl, and that could be programmed into the machine. The machine works along with our, the products in the machine, in Sally the Robot are, work very well with our current food service vendor, US Foods, and so there's specific items that are available to US Foods that correspond with Sally the Robot. So we're looking at that as an improved item, which I think would be great, and then beverage service as well, so there would be different beverages, as well as having coffee out there twenty-four seven.
How does the payment system work for something like Sally?
Your credit card, your debit card.
And that active, so you would make a choice, you'd be told how much you pay, put your credit card in, and then Sally would do?
Yep, yep.
Put it all together for you? Oh, I guess it's a good sized bowl.
I'm thinking about the old coffee maker, like, where would I even see these? When I was a kid, it would drop a cup down, and it would put in your coffee, your milk, whatever, but it was like a salad bar?
I don't think we're gonna get one of those.
No, but is it like that? Like it drops the bowl down, it drops your lettuce in?
It does, yeah. So there's a scale. I didn't think we were getting impressions of.
I have to say, you guys are so chartered on your gimbal with.
Yeah, so Sally Robot, it has, you get a bowl, they're nice sized bowls, and you put them in the slot, and the slot has a scale on it, and six times a second, it reads and gives information back up to the canister. The canisters are in like a circle, and depending on what you choose, it will rotate over to, I don't know, grape tomatoes, and then it will disperse a certain weight of grape tomatoes, and then it will go on to the next item, and that's how your bowl is built, and there's, you know, salad dressings and stuff, and those go on at the end, and they go on the side so that you can mix them yourselves, so it's not like.
I'm definitely trying to help this video.
Do a Google on salad, Sally Robot. Sure. Yeah, they actually do supply and sell on the machine itself, it will have our KTH's logo on it, or some other customization.
They're gonna add a barcode so you could put the nutritional information in your app.
They do have that, so there's.
The rad!
Yeah, no, there's a map, and there's, there's the displaying of all the ingredients and the nutritional.
So Jim, tell them what we're not getting. We're not getting Julie's frozen yogurt machine. I'm scared.
Julie's frozen yogurt machine.
Yeah.
We are looking at a smoothie bar available, and we also have on the equipment list a display freezer for ice cream bars or frozen yogurt bars, things of that nature.
I negotiated to that, so.
A frozen yogurt dispenser, we can get you on a cleaning shift.
Yeah. You said I had a pitch in.
Is Sally the Robot included in this budget, or is that something we lease, or is it?
No, it's included in the budget.
Okay.
And the company does have a lease option.
Okay, but hopefully they have a really long warranty.
Three years.
Okay.
Three years, yeah. The company called Chalbotic. They, I believe, have recently been purchased by DoorDash.
So would something like that only be used during off hours, or would that be how everyone gets their salad going forward?
That is used, it's going to be used twenty-four hours, and we'll still continue to have our salad bar as well. So this is part of also with reducing the bottleneck in the service area and being able to spread people out a little bit further. Another, another big thing that has been improved by us is our point-of-sale system, and being able to place orders remotely for the, for using food.
I know that there are several members of our community who have been very vocal about how wonderful a salad bar is, and that they would come in, that would be their only reason to the hospital, to get the salad, and I know that they're having a tough time with the no visitors and no extra people, they'll be happy to see you, and then have the option.
Yeah, yeah, we need to continue with salad bar. That's been a tradition for some time. I think, at least the representatives of the, I don't know, Sally, tell me that sixty to sixty-five percent of the sales happen after hours. So I think we could amortize that expense fairly quick.
Well, it's such a great option, because spending is definitely not healthy, that's just my relationship with it, it's a great option.
Yeah, so another component to the remodel is that we do have our main service area where our equipment is, and on the architectural drawing, there's, you can see there's a after-hours, there's a electric gate that would roll across, and separate out the service area from the dining area, so the dining area can be available both inside and outside. We will continue to have outside dining in our support area.
So is that bar seating on the, I guess, the north side?
That is correct, that is correct. So what we are doing is removing, to expand the service area, we're removing a number of seating seats, and we are making up for that, both by the expansion of current, or redesigning the current dining room a little bit, and then we have some bar seating against the window.
I think this is the, it's like a long booth with tables and chairs maybe.
Oh, that's table and chair.
Is that a long booth?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so that's by the laboratory.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the east wall. Yeah, that's the current booth seating that's there.
And the top.
And the top is bar seating.
As bar seating, okay.
Yes, yes, yeah. And part of the process too is we will change the color palette to, you know, the KTH standard that we've been doing for new construction.
And this is new flooring, new ceiling?
New floor, new ceiling, you know, some grill area, the ceiling's gonna be washable versus having, that's that you really can't clean. Yeah.
Great. So this is a project, the resolutions on twenty-one dash oh-two leads to this. This, the dollar amount of this, of the construction cost, is seems what can be done with the small works roster, so this is, this project will have to go to bid also.
Is this a two-step process for us to approve, to go to bid, and then once the bid goes in, we approve that?
We would approve the account a little bit.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on resolution twenty-one dash zero-two.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Motion by Matt, taken by Erica. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Don't pose.
Spend enough money for now, so.
I thought you had too much money. I'm starting to get the impression.
Michelle, community relations.
Do I have to add, Julie, we talked about the updated date for the employment recognition of that?
The engagement of that, where is it taking place? Is there a vehicle outside?
Yeah, so my workers will be bringing over their trailer, and we work it in kind of what is now KTH ten, and so it'll be.
Anything else, Michelle? Education. Kind of talked about a retreat in the old business. We do have a, just a brief board committees policy. We just have a couple small changes, and I think I have to make this next year also, but this is our annual, do we need a?
This policy just updating title changes is mainly the only changes that are.
Yeah, I mean, we probably need a. Just changing a few top names and titles. And I have a motion to accept the board committees. Motion by Erica.
Taken.
Taken by Matt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then we have the planning calendar for your update stuff. Yeah, anything else that is good of the order? If not, we'll close the meeting at this time. Appreciate everybody being here, the presentations and the discussion, for all the work that's happening. Lots of stuff going on, so thank you. So we'll reach out into executive session. Ten minutes, Julie?
Yeah.
And then session's gonna be.
Who's attending that session?
Linda, I got Sunde to join for a quick update, other than that, it's just being simple.
Oh, it's great to see everybody again in person, it's so nice.
Action.
Very good.
No action following anything.